...with liberty and justice for all. We join in the moment of silence. Thank you very much. First item on tonight's agenda, citizen concerns. Citizens, you are welcome to come up and to state your name and address and keep your limited remarks for three minutes. We appreciate the being here. Is there anybody who would like to speak tonight?
I would. My name's Daniel Hare. I'm from Hornick, Iowa.
An address, name?
Twenty-eight eighty-nine Humboldt Avenue, Hornick, Iowa, five-one-zero-two-six.
Thank you.
My first order of business tonight was to be with Mr. Raddig. He's not here. Yes, okay. I represent a group of people here that we wanted to come up and speak tonight about an issue, and I've heard from several of them several days ago and today that no one can get ahold of him. He won't answer the phone when they call, and his voicemail is full, and it hasn't been deleted for days. So that was an issue. I wanted to go on the record to, you know, address that to him, but since he's not here, I guess.
Is Keith on electronic or telephonically?
Yeah, I'm on, and anybody that called me, I called back. So any number I missed, I called back, so.
Did you get a call back?
No, I did not.
Oh, that, that, sorry, but that's untrue. And I mean, as an elected official, we just think we should be able to contact our elected officials and, you know, be able to leave messages or, you know, be responded back to. I mean, I mean that respectfully, but I've heard this from multiple people, and we have some in the audience tonight that, you know, have not received a call back.
Well, thank you for stating that.
There is, and I'll just make a statement that there is one individual that I called back that I did not get ahold of, and it went to his voicemail. And if anybody called me today, I texted him back that I was out for training for work up in Minneapolis. So that would be any clarification, but anybody that called me, I did call back.
Okay, that was first item of business. Second item of business I'm here for is to ask you guys to look at amending the wind ordinance in Woodbury County. We have a major property rights problem with that, as well as health concerns. I have a whole list of things. I know I'm limited here to a few minutes, but it's a big deal for landowners' rights. They'll be severely destroyed. If a landowner chooses not to have a windmill on their farm, but the neighbor does, then that severely compromises the non-windmill owner's property value. They may not be able to build a house or develop their land because of reverse setback distances from the windmill on their neighbor's property. So my question to that is, is who's going to make up the cost to the landowners who cannot build on their property because of the adjacent neighbor's windmills? So we're dealing with, you know, a setback problem there where it's a reverse setback, where someone may not have one on their property, but that ruins their property for future development, you know, if they so choose. Another problem I have as being a farmer myself is farmer tenants like myself and farmer landowners may or will lose their rights to protect their crops from insect, pests, and diseases. Wind turbine placement, even if not on their land, may put a complete end to the farmer's aerial application option to protect their crops. Flight paths will be interrupted, become too dangerous to fly, or simply hinder any form of aerial application. And who's going to compensate the farmer for this lost yield? Another problem that I have with it, you know, as being someone who uses our infrastructure to move grain and such, is the fact that our already fragile aging roads and bridges will be further destroyed. The cranes, trucks, and other equipment associated with their construction is massive and very heavy, and I'm afraid permanent expensive damage will result. Now, as far as addressing the setbacks, I know we're at one thousand two hundred and fifty feet in the county right now, and from what I have found, that is simply not enough. I mean, we're talking, you know, quarter mile distance here from a residence. And I've, I've talked to a lot of people, done some investigating myself, and it's been documented that ice has been flung from the blades of these turbines well over fifteen hundred feet, which resulted in property damage and livestock fatalities. That's fifteen hundred feet. I was also told that when you guys are going over this wind ordinance, we are going to have some of the strictest in the state. That's simply just not true. Other Iowa counties such as Cassuth, Page, and SAC have stricter setbacks from residences than our current ordinance. They're much less densely populated than our county. So I leave you with the question is why are our setbacks so short? And then also, just north of us in South Dakota, Lincoln County, wind turbine setbacks from a residence are required to be a full half mile, which is two thousand six hundred and forty feet, due to very vast concerns over property value and health concerns. Now, in the United States, the National Wind Coordinating Committee, also known as the NWCC, recommended that wind turbines be installed no closer than a half mile from any dwelling, which is again two thousand six hundred and forty feet.
Really appreciate your input. You're coming up on the time.
I appreciate that. So I ask that you guys please consider amending the wind ordinance to twenty-five feet or greater in this county.
Twenty-five hundred is what you're talking about.
Twenty-five hundred feet or greater.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard on any topic tonight?
My name is Bernard Hare, and my address is thirty-thirty Deer Run Trail, Anthony, Iowa.
Thank you, sir.
And I didn't hear anything or didn't know anything about these windmills coming into the county until I got a call from my landlord. And it's on a farm of his that I rent, just west and north of Clemmie Hill. So I went over to his office, met with this guy that was pushing it, and they haven't even done their homework, because there's two pipelines going across that farm, and he didn't even know it. I drew on the map where the pipeline is, and he kept asking where to put the, where to put the windmill. And I told him the only place he can put it on is on the corner of the farm, otherwise I don't want it at all. In fact, I don't want it anyway. But he doesn't want anybody talking from one neighbor to another comparing notes and what they're getting paid. And he denied that Mid-America has anything to do with this. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but I've heard that Mid-America is behind it. And he was going to give the landlord a thousand dollars a year, whether in the process of getting all this stuff set up, then after that, he was going to give him about thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars a year for fifty years. Then I asked him, oh, what do you do if one of these blades gets hit by lightning? Oh, we come in and haul it out. Well, there's documented evidence of these windmills blades getting destroyed, and they just bury, take a hole in the property and bury it on the property rather than haul it out. So I just don't want him in Woodbury County, myself.
Thank you very much for your input, Mr. Hare. Other citizens to be heard tonight on any matter?
Troy Woodman, Anthony, Iowa, twenty-four seventy-nine Hancock Avenue. Got a bunch of concerns about this windmill deal.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so for one, they can say all they want, they make noise. My kids up in North Dakota, my ex-wife was up there, they've gone about four miles from the house. They said they can hear constant whining, humming, nonstop, lights flashing in the windows. They said they're just a nuisance that way, for one. Number two, so I talked to my banker on the way here, he lives over in Marcus. You know, they put a bunch from up there. I said, what's going to happen to the value of my property? I said, I know I've just got an acreage and run some cows, but I said, I don't plan on moving anywhere anytime soon, but ten, fifteen years now, something changes. Who's going to make up that value loss of my property? Because it has affected the value of property up there. I mean, you're talking, there's windmills probably going to go within quarter to half mile of my house, all the way around. There's a substation another mile east of us. Reason they want that area there is a substation there where they can run all the power to off those windmills to go their different directions. Concrete, I mean, so I was out in Nell, Nebraska, back when Mortenson came in and put the big windmill farm out there. And that concrete's twenty-five, thirty feet down the ground, a hundred foot wide, and they only want to take off the top six feet. And that ain't near enough, because Morton said, had told one of the other workers there, who I worked, was very close with, I know you can say it's here, say whatever, said in twenty years when the subsidies run out, once those windmills are done, or once the subsidies run out, the minute they're broke down, I said, they don't become feasible for them anymore, they don't care. I mean, this is Mortenson, they're one of the big contractors up in Minnesota. And I don't know who's behind this one here, but more likely, they would be one of the bigger ones pushing for this. They're going to tear up our roads. Our roads are already rough the way they are. Like I said, I mean, I've seen what happens out there, because I worked on the trucks that hauled the rock out there. So when trucks break down, I would go out there and work on the trucks. So I've seen what this did to the roads. They're not a good deal. So we really need to push for that twenty-five hundred foot setback. The other thing, I don't know, we're mad on time, but I can't remember which one of you I spoke, I think I spoke with most of you. Some of you spoke that you're for small government. I said, I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican, whatever you are, small government. I know you say that we should, which I understand, we should be able to do whatever we want with our property. If we want to build a windmill, fine, whatever, small government. But when you've got the federal government coming in, pushing their agenda to get this wind energy in here, funding Mid-America with their subsidies, that is big government pushing it, which is not what you are for if you're saying you're for small government. So just please appreciate if you would think about switching this ordinance to a twenty-five hundred foot setback. So.
Thank you very much. Other citizens to be heard on any item that's not on the agenda?
Mark Nelson, Correctionville, thirty-seven seventy-three Hundred Eightieth Street. I talked to all four of you guys on the phone. In fairness to Supervisor Raddig, we played phone tag for about three days, so I just wanted to say that. As far as some of the comments that were made up here, the first one talked about the ice being flung off and the impact of livestock. So I have some close friends that ranch down Oklahoma, we've visited them many times, and they kind of joked that the four things they have in their county are wind, oil, wheat, and cattle. And that's if you've ever visited Kingfisher, Oklahoma, that's pretty much what's there. But the problem they have with the ice in regards to cattle is they graze year-round, just like we do here, whether it's pasture, corn stalks, and the ice will fling off, and it'll hit this, it could be cattle, horses, sheep, whatever, but it will hit them, kill them. The problem becomes that the ice melts, so then the proof disappears. So then producers go out, they find dead livestock, and they can't turn it into insurance because they have no proof to document what killed that animal. So what's happened is they've either, when they have ice storms, snowstorms, or whatever, they'll try to move livestock away from these turbines in order to try to prevent that from happening, which is a very expensive, costly thing, or they have to dedicate a lot of time to riding through those herds for days afterwards in case those ice gets sucked off. If something happens, then they can document, you know, and because, I mean, we're talking massive chunks of ice that fly off these things. So I mean, that is a real, real concern. Secondly, I don't know if any of you guys know, but we have a feedlot and a farm up in Marcus, Cherokee County, a mile south of Marcus. So we're about three miles from where the wind farm stopped, three miles south. They could not come in our area because there's a northern natural gas pipeline and because there was too many homes that were too close. However, we had a hired man that worked for us for thirty-five years that had bought an acreage north of Marcus and had moved in there when he retired about a year before the wind farm was even a thing. And he can't sleep through the night anymore. His little acreage was just in the middle of a section, long driveway, he loved it. You know, it's going to be off the road, it's a quiet place. Now he can't sleep at night. All he hears is whoosh, whoosh, whoosh. And, you know, he's sitting there thinking, what am I going to do with this property now when I go to sell it? It's time to, if my kids put me in a nursing home, whatever. He goes, I'm going to have to take a major hit just from the sound, and he didn't have a choice, you know. He was, he was there before any of the turbines were there, but now his, you know, his life is completely screwed up, you know. And he's had to get blackout shades to block out the flashing lights, you know. And so it is a real problem, and I, you know, every day when I farm, I try to make sure that I do as little impact to my neighbors, whether that's my cattle getting out or a pesticide drifting across the fence, whatever it may be, I want to be a good neighbor. And I think it's important that we set boundaries on these things so that our neighbors are being good neighbors to everybody. And in Woodbury County, we have so many acreages. There are so many people that want to move out of the city, and they want to live around Bronson Lot in Mobile, whatever. They want to have an acreage for their kids to run and have some 4H lambs or sheep. And Woodbury County is one of the highest active enrollments in 4H and FFA in the state, and that's why, because we have all that acreage living. And I'm telling you right now, that will dry up. You know, the new builds will stop if they're surrounded by turbines, and some of these old buildings or old building sites that young people like myself would buy to fix up to raise a family, not going to happen. So I mean, that's just something to take into consideration, and I think you guys will do the right thing, so.
Thank you very much.
My name's Peter Woodman, Sergeant Bluff, Iowa, eighteen forty-seven, Old Highway one forty-one. And appreciate your time. I guess some of my concerns over on the eastern side of the state along the Mississippi, I understand they don't have a lot of the windmills over there, partially, in fact, due to the bird populations, the eagles, the migration of the birds. Here along the Mississippi, or along the Missouri River, we have a lot of the similar things. And we also are in the Les Hills. I live on the foothills of the Les Hills and live on a scenic byway. And I guess on a normal spring, we'll see twenty to seventy bald eagles pass through, and lots of birds in the area, and I guess high farm as well. Roads, tiles, aerial application, all that's important as well. But I think something that's not been talked about was just the natural habitat, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other citizens tonight who have yet to be heard on an item that is not on the agenda? Well, thank you very much for your input. Because this item's not on the agenda, we can't debate it tonight. I'll just make a couple of comments. The ordinance process was passed with several public hearings, but I understand that now it's starting to become a reality. So neighbors are engaging with others, and we're starting to hear of these coming in. I also understand the original county engineer's recommendation, which some of you have asked about. It was twenty-five hundred feet. It was amended to twelve hundred and fifty, and that there's ninety to a hundred and twenty proposed in Woodbury County. I have asked our assistant county attorney or the county attorney's office if an ordinance like this can be amended. And the response that I've received was the county can amend its ordinance at any time. What we don't know is what effect that will have, in particular, on any agreements that have been previously made or are being made right now. And my response as a supervisor has been that we need to hear from people, and we need to hear from people publicly, and appreciate that you're making your voice heard. And it's up to any individual supervisor to put on the agenda and re-ask that that ordinance process be reviewed, to be changed, if that's the desire of the board. I also ask just full disclosure and transparency, our county engineer to poll the other counties and to provide informationally for the board what those setbacks are. You mentioned some tonight, including Cassuth and SAC, for the information of the board to make its decision. So thank you very much for speaking on the topic, and it does make a difference, your input. So thank you. Any other citizen concerns? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number two, which is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move it.
All second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, and the motion passes five to zero. The consent agenda, items three through ten constitute a consent agenda of routine action, items to be considered by one motion. These items will pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item number three is approval of the minutes of the July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five from board administration is approval of a notice of property sale resolution for a parcel, also known as five fifteen South College Street, for Tuesday, August second, at four thirty-five P.M. Item six from the county auditor recorder is to receive county recorder's report of fees collected. Item seven from building services is the approval of items to be auctioned by personal property disposition policy. Item eight from human resources is A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, the authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item nine from community and economic development is the approval to set three public hearing dates of August second at four forty-five, August ninth at four forty-five, and August sixteenth at four forty-five for the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment. And item ten from the county treasurer is to receive the semi-annual report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. I'll move the, yes, I'm sorry.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. I would like to amend the authorization to initiate hiring process. As it is put forth, it says advanced EMT, where I do believe the director would just like to hire EMT at the wage plan rate of nineteen fifty-seven.
I will move that if I can have a second.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. I'll now move the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion passes five to zero. Item number eleven from conservation, Director Dan Heisels, to approve funds to pay for the AC heat pump units or allow amendment of conservation board budget in the spring to cover the cost.
Dan Heisels, Director of Woodbury County Conservation. Well, I come to you, you know, these are things we can't budget for or look for and look down the road. We have four units in the cabins down at Snyder Bend that are twelve years old, we've been told. We've had two different companies come in and look at these to try and repair them and make them last. And both told us, say, we're not fixable. It was cost prohibitive to fix the two that are down right now. So my goal is to have the other two evaluated when they're putting the other two in and make sure that we're not going to have issues there. But my ask today is to look for funding from the supervisors to help pay for the air conditioning units. They are also heat pumps. They also heat those cabins during the winter. So we look at, as I explained in the information, that could cause problems if they fail on us in the winter, and we have frozen pipes. So I didn't have it budgeted before I spent it. I figured I'd better come in and talk to you. So any help would be appreciated.
We appreciate that very much. So you're talking about two units for eighty-six hundred?
Two units right now at eighty-six. We don't know the condition of the other two because we're going to have them evaluated when they're down there. My board was, you could get another year out of them. We might not. If they go down during the winter when people aren't renting them, then you have frozen water lines. That's why we're going to have them evaluated professionally when they're down there to see what they think of the condition. But they are twelve years old. They've been, I've been told the last ten to fifteen years, and that's, I don't know, your air conditioning stuff in your houses lasts longer than that, but these are heat exchangers and pumps that do the air conditioning and the heating, so apparently they don't last as long.
My second question is how long out are we on ordering this kind of stuff? We've been, a school district and library association have contacted me today.
We took bids, or we took bids to know where we're at, and to get them ordered, we could have them this week. So one company couldn't get them, the other company could, so. We're scrambling to try and, because we do, the cabins are rented, and that's the problem. They come in on Thursday through Sunday. All four of them are rented all the way through the, every weekend to the middle of August. Of course, then they start going back to school, so our rentals fall off then. But we've got temporary AC units in there that sit in the corner, and then they run the hoses out the window. It's not the prettiest thing. It's not the quietest thing, but it's getting us by until we get this problem figured out, so.
Any questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Well, I know Dennis isn't here tonight, but the last time I talked, I think we had somewhere north of five hundred and thirty thousand gaming.
That's what he alluded to me. He might be a possibility for you guys.
I, I think that it would be a good source of funding. I mean, obviously, it wasn't anticipated that this would happen to use gaming revenue for these first two, and then upon evaluation, maybe amend the budget and maybe come back. We can, to be determined, the other two, is that?
Yeah, I, I hate, I don't want to ask for the, all four of them, right? I'd like to. Maybe we could word it that, replace the two that are down and non-reparable. Maybe with the caveat that if the other two are deemed by the professionals to be on their last leg, replace them. If they think they'll last for a while, then we don't. We wait. That's, that's your guys' decision.
I, I would rather not do that because if anybody pays attention to the meeting and hears us say that, I honestly think that they're going to deem them to be bad at that point.
I don't like sitting in the middle of rental season, and we have units that are down.
I don't either, because that's a heck of a scramble on a Friday night when the AC goes out. We've been forcing to get repairmen down it, but they can't fix them, so then you scramble to find, can't move them anywhere. They're, you know, they have family reunion, so I appreciate that, Rocky. It's, it is a struggle. Or do you be forward-thinking and know that the other two are growing down, and I don't know.
How old are they?
Twelve years old.
How old are the other two, though?
They're twelve years old.
Oh, all of them?
All four went in at the same time when the cabins came in. And those units are the ones that went through the flood, that had to be taken apart and moved out of there and brought back. So I don't know if that affected them, so maybe these other ones are going to last longer. I don't know.
Well, when I get one flat tire on my truck and they're bald, I don't buy one tire at a time. I replace them all. So frankly, I'd just soon replace them all or at least have the funding there to do it that way, because who knows what they'll cost in another year or two.
I, I like your thinking, and that's the way I proposed it to my board before they sent me here. And we thought, though, we'd offer that as well, that we could get the other two later. But so I'd be happy to do that, then I don't have to worry in the winter that they're going to go down. I'm going to have frozen pipes either, so.
I would move to take money from funding and replace the four.
Up to thirty-four thousand four hundred and some.
Eighty, right now, they're at, the quotes we have are at eighty-six hundred apiece. And so I guess I'll find the rest if it goes up. Let's put it that way, if you're going to do all four.
I'll second the motion.
So motion by DeWitt, second by Young, to appropriate up to thirty-four thousand four hundred dollars from gaming revenue? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
And the motion passes four to one. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on. We are moving on to item number twelve, Board of Supervisors, Supervisor DeWitt, to approve the purchase of a Dodge Ram four-wheel-drive pickup to replace a Suburban currently used by the emergency services director for fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and includes a trade-in of the Suburban funded by gaming revenue.
I will ask Scott to step up, but I will open this, I guess. Scott was telling us, and I'd heard from the previous director on emergency services, that the Suburban's getting a little tired, has some miles on it, and not necessarily that it'd have rough use, but that kind of maintenance is probably expected for a vehicle that's got that many miles on it. So our initial thinking was we would replace it with a three-quarter ton pickup. Scott thought he would be better served by a four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton crew cab style truck with a box. I was approached by the sheriff's office, they may have a vehicle that might be, that is on order, but it's a half-ton. They were looking for a home for it, and I hate to see it go to waste. So contacted Scott and asked him if he could make do with a half-ton, because it's not like we tow these trailers every week or whatever, but at least this way, he can dress it up the way he wants, and it would be still some fairly substantial. Because I vaguely remember that the numbers on the, at least the cheapest truck you brought was forty-six or forty-eight thousand dollars. So initially, we got some savings right out of the gate, probably better fuel economy with a half-ton as opposed to three-quarter.
Scott Mitchell, emergency services director. Yeah, you know, the other way you go with three-quarter ton, you're still going to put ten to ten thousand for lights and sirens. So that cost you're going to have either way. This way here, you know, we put another eight to nine thousand in to put a set of airbags and to make it do what we need it to do, that we can make it do, and it'll serve the purpose better. On the fuel mileage, I think it's going to save us a lot, because I know what I'm putting in that Suburban, and I have a rough idea what it's going to take. and I have a rough idea what it's gonna take to fix that Suburban. In the end, we'd be better off just in fuel savings. And then for the fact is, we're getting it through the search department with their government discount. That's gonna help us a lot, too. I mean, I can, like I said, I can make the half-ton work with adding, you know, the airbags and all of that stuff to it, to pull the trailer so we need to. And then, of course, we'll take the lights and sirens out of the Suburban and put them in that, that half-ton pickup. Or if it won't transfer over, it will be that center council. So.
Any comments, or?
Sounds like a good proactive plan all the way around. So.
I will. I will make the motion then, as ordered.
So the motion is to approve the purchase of a Dodge Ram four-wheel-drive pickup to replace the Suburban for $14,287 from gaming revenue.
Yes, sir.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Ung. Any other discussion? Good work all the way around. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And the motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. That was nearly $50,000 in gaming revenue, and that's a good thing, because that's not going against anybody's property taxes or necessitating a budget amendment, if I can say the word. Item number 13, Board of Supervisors, Matthew Young, Jeremy Taylor authorize up to $115,000 of ARPA retention paid to CWA Local 7103 Secondary Roads employees in FY23 for a 4% wage increase effective July 1, 2022. So that's retroactive to then. And direct HR to draft an MOU for board approval. Supervisor Ung?
Yes, thank you. I'll just start off by saying the board went through a similar process when we raised the jailers using this funding source. And cutting to the chase here, in the recommendation, I can read that the union negotiated a 2.25% increase for this year and a 2% increase for the next. Unfortunately, the CPI for June is currently at 9.1% year-over-year, and our most experienced operators currently earn less than four out of five comparable counties in Iowa. We recommend using ARPA retention funds up to the amount stated and until the contract is up for wage renegotiation in two years. I was able to, I was invited to and was happy to address the membership of the CWA Union recently. Heard directly from them and looked into the numbers with our HR director and also county engineer. What I think we're wanting to do as a board, as we face these inflation issues and wage issues and retention issues, is to responsibly target the lowest-hanging fruit, so to speak. Unfortunately, the most underpaid areas of the county government providing essential services, first public safety and now infrastructure and road, road service. And so this recommendation is for a 4% increase. Understandably, it's probably not the first ask from the employees, but it is something that I think moves the ball forward. And one thing I think makes this unique to consider is that typically, when we look at union contracts like this, there are step increases. And when we looked at comparables here, we found out that was typically the case, where you're rewarded for longevity. Every, every year, you go up a step and you operate between the minimum and the maximum. Woodbury County does not have step increases. And so the wages you see now and with a 4% increase generally mean that we start higher, but we stay lower. So as someone builds experience, there's more and more reason to leave, which is not what we want from the most experienced members of the team providing gravel service to our several hundred miles of secondary roads. So most of this deals with equipment operators, motor graders, truck drivers, which is 41 out of the 44, I believe, affected employees. And again, this is to authorize this for a two-year period. We'd only make a motion for this year, but I would hope that we would do what we've sort of planned with the jailers is to carry this through until the wage renegotiation process occurs, in this case, in two years. Mr. Taylor, anything to add?
Yeah, thank you very much. So I, I think that this is, everything has already been well said. If you think about the two main groups that are really being affected by what's being built right now, the law enforcement center with the jailers, and of course, our secondary roads, we're adding four to six inches of gravel base over 1,249 miles, total county roads, and appreciative of your group and being able to speak to you about the issue, and any comments that you'd like to make?
Yeah, Corey, excuse me, Corey Davis, 2026 Street, Sergeant Bluff, Iowa, also the president of Local 7103, CWA. I just want to thank the board, Mr. Ung, for being there, to, coming to our meeting. That actually meant a lot to our members, to, made it a lot more personal, you know, you sitting there, sitting with us, hearing our concerns. You know, this isn't, you know, we'd asked for more, but we are super appreciative for anything that we can get. I mean, this is more than we had yesterday. We're also thankful for the $1,000 last, you know, for the last fiscal year. You know, it means a lot to us that, that you guys are willing to work with us. When we negotiated in 2019, I mean, nobody knew what was gonna happen. Nobody knew, you know, what, what the world was gonna turn into. You know, Rocky was there when we, when we negotiated in 2019, and, and things are crazy. But this, and, but when we talked, I didn't want it to seem as though this was a charity owe things, you know, milk's more expensive. I think this really is a good use of public funds, because the retention issues that we're talking about, there's a lot of employers that are hiring for, for more. And these guys love their jobs. They love what they're doing. They don't want to look for other work. Right now, a lot of them are working second jobs just to try and keep up, but they want to continue working at the county. And we want to be able to get the best quality workers in the future as spots open up. So I, as I always say, quality labor isn't cheap, and cheap labor isn't quality, and I think our, our county deserves the best. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Other board discussion? Well, we certainly appreciate each and every member that you have and all of our workers. And I'll also say that Mark was an advocate in this as well. So with that, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to authorize up to $115,000 of ARPA retention paid to CWA Secondary Roads Union workers in FY23 for a 4% wage increase effective July 1, 2022, and direct Human Resources to draft the MOU for board approval.
Second. Motion by Ung, second by Taylor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And the motion passes five to zero. Next item on the agenda is report on committee meetings. Anything to report?
I didn't have any last week.
We have rolling hills tomorrow and some to report back on.
Wait, I'm sorry, we did. We had an IT.
Yes.
IT meeting. Working on the IT director's evaluation, for one thing, but.
Same issues with retention in all different pay ranges, all different areas of government, all different kinds of essential employees.
All right. Any other committee meetings? Hearing none, item 15, a second round of citizen concerns. Hey, there you go.
Mark Nelson didn't move from last time. So on June 25, we had the fifth annual Woodbury County Farm Bureau tractor ride. And we had a beautiful day. We had 50 tractors. We had somewhere between 65 and 70 people that were involved with the day. But we had the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office involved. We had two deputies, one that went in front of the ride, one that rode behind, make sure that we stayed safe all day and that traffic was aware that we were out there. They've done this every year that we've done it. We're very appreciative of that. And we appreciate that they have the funding and the staff to be able to come out and do stuff like that. Sheriff Sheehan and Lieutenant Armstrong were great to work with, and Reserve Sergeant Grimm, who was there that day, was awesome. He was handing stuff out to kids, just was really, really great. So, you know, every year, we talk about what we can do for the sheriff's office. And, you know, it's things like that that we really appreciate. And so I hope you guys, you know, take that consideration, that those community events that they do are impactful to those people. So I just wanted to end that on a good note. So.
Excellent.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Other citizen concerns? Board concerns, item 16. I think there's probably not a better way to end the meeting. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.